Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting with the Elder and City Councils. The case date is October 14, 2025. Please join in the conference.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us make a call to the spot. As we come together to serve our community, may we come to our words of open minds, thoughts and hearts, and a shared commitment to common good. May our discussions be guided by respect, fairness, and spiritual cooperation. Let our decisions tonight benefit the well-being of our city and all who have been working with it. May our efforts reflect the best of what it means to serve others. Thank you. I would like to call on Mr. Sullivan for the approval of the minutes.
Yes, Your Honor, I have read and reviewed the council meeting and workshop minutes from September 23, 2025. I find them in order, and I move for approval.
Second.
Anyone have any questions, additions? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator Evan Russell. Thanks for your assistance, Evan. Do I have my speaker on? That better? Okay. Welcome to everyone here tonight. It's a nice, full crowd. We'd love to see that. I know you all came to hear Carolyn Rice, but you will hear from her County Commissioner in a minute. Let's see. We've already approved the minutes. Proclamations. We are going to hear from Carolyn right now, as a matter of fact. Carolyn, would you like to come up? Carolyn is going to be speaking to us about the so important Human Services Levy that will be on this year's ballot.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Yes, I am here. I'll be brief, but it's so important. Our Human Services Levy is on the ballot on November 4. Voting has already begun, but I am here to encourage everyone to vote yes for Issue One and tell you why. So in Montgomery County, we're different than many other counties here in the state of Ohio in that we combine all of our different Human Services Levy into a combined levy. There's two of them. There's A, and then this is B. It is for a renewal. It will not raise taxes. It will raise the $58 million, same as it has been. And we are working to just get the word out of what all it covers. And because it covers all of our human services, it's critically important. That $58 million actually is leveraged for federal and state and private grants. So really, what's at stake is far more than $58 million. The services that are provided are a full range of human services. Our senior citizens, our protecting our children, our disabled, our public health. It goes on and on, all these different human services. But our commissioners 40 or 50 years ago decided, rather than have each one have its own levy, they would combine them into an overall. We have always, always, always approved the levies. At about the last time it was on, in 2021, A levy was on. We approved it at about 70%. And so we continue to provide just vital, vital services. You should know that it's mental health and drug addiction, like I've said, public health, the homeless solutions. It even gets into emergency preparedness when we had the tornadoes. Human services came into play. COVID, obviously, it was vitally important that we had strong human services. And we don't know what we face in the future, so we want to have a strong human services system. I just got new numbers this afternoon from 2024. Where does, who uses the human services? And I can honestly tell you that everywhere in Montgomery County uses the services. It shows, this is 2024, down here in the southeast portion, I'll show you. In the southeast portion of our county, uses about 20%. The central core uses little, it shows 42%, but that overstates it because there are agencies and like our foster children are all, the address is in Dayton, even though they are all over the county. So it overstates that at about 42%. Up in the northeastern part of our county, about 18%. In the northwest, 11%. In our southwest, about 9%. But there is not an area in our county that doesn't have someone, disabled, age needed, you name it. So what I'm asking for you tonight, you can, and for anyone here, if you want more information, you can go to www.votforhumanservices.com. You can, more questions if you have more than I'm covering tonight. But also, you can, if you want to volunteer, if you want to donate, if you want, I have some yard signs in my car. If anybody wants, I have about nine of them. I've passed out about 90. So hopefully, you're seeing them all over the community. I saw my first TV ad last night, and I've seen billboards. So you should start to see the ads for all of this. And I have quite a few flyers here. I received one at my house. I hope all of you have received one of these already. So that's what it's about. And I cannot impress upon you that more than 100,000 of our fellow citizens benefit from the Human Services Levy that is on the ballot. You probably have a neighbor, a friend, a family member, a cousin, someone who in some way has benefited from this. So let us keep our streak going in Montgomery County of resoundingly approving these levies. Now, I don't know if your council can actually endorse. Some can and some can't. So that would be my only ask, but if you cannot, I, you know, I certainly honor that.
I think we are, I know we have in the past, but yeah.
Well, you don't have to do it right now, but you can decide if you're, if you want to.
We have to put it on an agenda.
But really, my main goal here is for all of you to be aware that it's on the levy. Need to go, need to vote, and please, please, please vote yes for your community because this will really make a difference in so many people's lives.
Thank you, Carolyn. Council hasn't voted this year on whether or not we endorse it. We'll certainly take that up.
Okay.
But I am free at this point to say that I endorse it wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
And just, no one likes paying taxes. We all wish they'd go away. But reality, you know, we have, nothing's free. And none of the services that are so critically needed are free. And if we were to vote this down out of some kind of protest for taxes, this community would be in a world of hurt tomorrow. So keep that in mind. This is not the way to protest your taxes. So, thank you. Does anyone on the council have anything to say? Any questions?
Like I said, if you have any questions, go to votforhumanservices.com. There's a whole lot of information that you could get engaged. And thank you for everything.
Carolyn, those yard signs aren't doing much good in the trunk of your car. If you want to take them out and put them in the lobby, people.
I will do that.
Free to take them when they leave.
I will do that.
Okay.
If you need me to pick them up, if there's a few left, or I'll trust you all to make sure they get in very visible places. Okay?
People feel free to take them on your way out.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Council members, take ten.
I'm good.
Okay, you're good. Thank you. Okay. We do have a proclamation today, and I'm going to ask Mr. Suddeth.
Thank you. I do have a proclamation for Make a Difference Day, and the proclamation reads, whereas Make a Difference Day connects people with opportunities to serve, strengthens communities, and promotes civic engagement. And whereas Make a Difference Day is one of the largest single days of service nationwide, uniting tens of thousands of volunteers with a common mission to improve the lives of others through community-driven service projects. And whereas, established over two decades ago by the Points of Light Foundation, the city of Kettering is proud to be a nationally recognized participant. And whereas, the city of Kettering will provide opportunities for all to participate in this day of service designed to leverage the dedication, commitment, and power of volunteers to address a variety of needs in our community. And whereas, volunteers from service clubs, faith-based organizations, Blue Star Mothers, local schools, and the community will partner with the city of Kettering to complete a variety of service projects, including expanding the native plant rain garden at Van Buren Park, removing invasive plants at State Farm Park, creating holiday arts and crafts for seniors and veterans at Victory Christian Church, and preparing holiday greeting cards for active-duty military members from home with kids provided by the city of Kettering Volunteer Office. In addition, a community blood drive will be held. I therefore, on behalf of Peggy Lehner, the mayor of the city of Kettering, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October 25, 2025, to be Make a Difference Day in the city of Kettering, and urge all citizens to observe this day by joining efforts to make a positive impact and try to make a difference in their community.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Brian. Carrie Basson, Volunteer Advisory Council Chair, will accept the proclamation. Welcome, Carrie. Let me give you this, and then you'll give us a few words. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lehner and council. Speaking on behalf of the Kettering Volunteer Advisory Council, we are proud, as an advisory council, to be spearheading the coordination of a large selection of volunteers who are going to represent the city of Kettering once again on October 25th, as we participate in Make a Difference Day. Brian, it was nice enough to list some of the places where we're going to be located for you and for our audience. If you are interested in participating, we will partner with Silvita to hold the community blood drive. That's going to be at the Kettering Fire Headquarters. That's 4745 Hempstead Drive, Station Drive. We'll have the volunteers at State Farm Park. I think everybody knows where State Farm Park is located. The volunteers at Victory Christian Church are going to actually create holiday arts and crafts and cards for seniors and veterans. Victory Christian is at 2275 South Patterson Boulevard. We will have, again, volunteers at Van Buren Park with the rain garden. This is actually the fourth year of this project at the rain garden, and we're really doing some great work over there, doing some pollinator-friendly planting to beautify that area for park visitors. And it should be noted, that project is also made possible through funding from Keep Montgomery County Beautiful. So we do appreciate that funding. And for those who aren't able to actually come out on the 25th, the volunteer office has card kits available. You can pick those up, and that allows you to make 10 holiday cards for deployed servicemen and women. You can pick those up anytime after the 25th, return them by the 31st, and Blue Star Mothers will make sure that those get delivered to our troops in time for the holidays. So thank you so much, this important day that we participate in. As a community, would not be possible without your support, so we very much appreciate that. Invite you all to stop by any of those locations. We'll start around 9:00 in the morning, we'll be finished by noon, and we absolutely appreciate the support that you provide to the Volunteer Advisory Council and to Make a Difference Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Carrie, and we hope many of you will choose to participate. I suspect a lot of the people in this room tonight will participate in Make a Difference Day because they have a history of making a difference in their community. I am really honored tonight to be able to recognize some of those people in our community who go above and beyond to help their neighbors. Tonight, Gwen Owens with the Board of Community Relations will present awards to those people who have been nominated by their friends and family for a special award, Good Neighbor Awards. So Gwen, if you could come on down, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit before you start the presentation?
Tonight, we're recognizing all of the folks nominated for Kettering's third annual Good Neighbor Award. Nominated by their neighbors, these are the people who go above and beyond to be helpful and kind in their neighborhoods. Good neighbors generally don't expect anything in return, but their neighbors and their city want to take this opportunity to thank them. All of the Good Neighbor nominees, their friends and their families, are invited to join us downstairs immediately following this recognition for a reception. And we'll take more time down there to go over all the cool stories that we heard about all these wonderful people. But I'm going to read off the names of all of our Good Neighbor nominees, and if they're here, I would like them to stand up. All of our nominees are Amanda Mobley, Dawn Letner, Jonathan and Colette Hoag.
Now, people aren't standing up if you're here. Come on. Come on, don't be shy.
Elaine Babett. Mackenzie Graham. Mike Lane, I hope I'm pronouncing names right. Devin and Elise Whitney. Larry and Bonnie McSwigan. Alan Vance. We had one that was nominated just by first name, Pete.
Pete? Is Pete here?
Good neighbor Pete.
Hank and Marge Damewood. Valerie, Zavi, and Joey Valdez. Ray, Cassie, and Nathan Ramsey. Judy Miller. Sandra Brisington.
Sandra here?
And Brenda D'Amico. After much discussion, the Board of Community Relations selected one winner of a $50 gift card to Blueberry Cafe. And this year, our Good Neighbor winner is Brenda D'Amico. Brenda was nominated by Brittany Knight Manley, who wrote in part, "Mrs. Brenda has been so kind and warm since the day she moved in. Last year, she donated to help for my husband's kidney transplant. She even offered her car for us to get to Columbus. I would like to give her my gratitude for all she has done and is still doing, from the kidney surgery till now. That's what you call a good neighbor, family, and friend." The Board of Community Relations sincerely thanks all of these wonderful people for helping to make Kettering such a great place to live, not just for your neighbors, but for all of us. I hope all the good neighbors who are here tonight will join us downstairs now for a little celebration. We'll give certificates, and we have refreshments. So that's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gwen. You know, I can say that it's too bad we don't have the time to go through each and every story because they will, each and every one of them brings a tear to your eyes. And I'd love to step out of the meeting and come downstairs and hear those, but I might get a rebellion if I did. But thank you, everyone, for all the work you do, and keep it up. Okay, as you go downstairs, if you could keep your voices down because sound really travels right up the stairway. Oh, we're keeping a lot of people here. Okay, good. All right, we'll get along with the agenda here. At this point, I do have an appointment to make. Is Al Follencamp here tonight? No, okay. He's probably at a Greater Dayton RTA Board meeting. We are renewing his leadership role in that. Except, we, we need a motion to accept an appointment and a second, and we will vote on whether or not Al can continue to represent us on the RTA Board. So do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. And anyone have any questions, thoughts? It's Al. Call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay, congratulations, Al. We now have a public hearing. I suspect that is the reason that many of you are here.
We got an ordinance seconded.
Yeah. Your next one. She did so good with that. She's a good one. It's going to carry her pretty.
Okay. At this point, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak about the legislation before us tonight, that's any of the legislation that's coming up, you may do so at this time. If you wish to speak on some item other than the legislation on tonight's agenda, you may do that later in the meeting. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speaker must state their name and address, and comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the agenda on tonight's agenda, there will be an opport, on the legislation, I'm sorry, on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for you to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight on any of this legislation? Okay. Seeing none. We will now move on to ordinances and second reading. We have one ordinance and second reading, and Mr. Sullivan may call on you for that.
All righty. I have an ordinance and second reading to amend chapters 1321, 1322, 1323, 1324, 1325, 1326, 1327, and 1328 of the codified ordinances of the city of Kettering regarding property maintenance. This is requested by the Planning and Development Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Tom, rub a light.
Thank you, Your Honor. This legislation modifies the, or amends the property maintenance code in several sections. Most of the items that are being changed are minor in scope and clarifications, including defining what wildflower gardens are, our requirements and responsibilities for towing vehicles, and it also modifies penalties, changing the, a first violation could be guilty of a fourth-degree misdemeanor, and a second violation of the same thing might be considered a third-degree misdemeanor. But I do want to take this opportunity to point out that one of the big changes in the code is our enforcement of tall grass. For starting next year, we will be advertising in the newspaper that tall grass and weeds have to be kept below eight inches. Over eight inches is considered a violation. Someone is in violation after that during the mowing season, the first time, we will send a letter, a notice of violation, saying that you need to cut that. They'll have 10 days to cut the grass, or we will send our mowing contractor out there to mow it for you. The second violation, we will just send our mowing contractor out to mow the lawn. The violators will not be noticed after that. That will make our enforcement abilities much more efficient, particularly as it relates to cutting tall grass and weeds. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. You might really take a serious look at these changes because these are the sort of things that you live with. Once we pass them, they're law, and we have to adhere to that law. So if you have any concerns about where we're going with the definitions of these things, now's your chance to have some input on them. No other questions from anyone in council? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay.
Your Honor, I have a resolution affirming the decision of the Kettering Board of Zoning Appeals in case number BZA-25-007 concerning the property located at 817 Kenosha Road. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Mr. Hamel, our law director, would you wish to speak at this point?
Thank you, Your Honor. As the title states, adopting this resolution would affirm the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals in this matter for the reasons stated in the resolution. Thank you.
No questions? No questions? None? Okay. Call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing Brian Chidowski to serve as executive director of the Miami Valley Research Park Association. This is requested by the city manager's office, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor. This resolution makes Mr. Chidowski, gives him an ability to serve as the executive director of the Research Park Association. As you may know, under the regulations of the Miami Valley Research Park Association, the city of Kettering serves as the developer of the park. That's a result of us being the largest landowner, and this appointment as executive director helps advance that responsibility. Be glad to answer any question, excuse me, any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply and accept an OVI Task Force Grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. The estimated cost is $21,000. This request is by the police department, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greason?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city of Kettering is approved for a $21,000 Montgomery County OVI Task Force Grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. This grant will reimburse the city for overtime expenses related to the 2025 and 2026 operating a vehicle under the influence or OVI enforcement effort. This is for the, as I said, the 2025, 2026 grant period. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for 2025 livable and age-friendly communities grant funding through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission and the Dayton Foundation. The estimated cost is $16,000. The amount budgeted is zero, and this is requested by the city manager's office. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor. Our staff is always looking for opportunities to improve the experience of patrons who use our facilities. These funds will be utilized to purchase an adaptive bicycle and equipment to be used at the Lathrum Senior Center. This grant is awarded to communities to assist with advancing age-friendly initiatives in their community. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the removal and replacement of concrete within parks and park-related facilities. Estimated cost, $85,000, and is requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I do move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergstrasser?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is fairly self-explanatory. This capital improvement project will consist of removing and repairing concrete within the Lincoln Park Civic Commons area and other various locations that are maintained by the Parks Division. If you have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager, I have the wrong one. Sorry, I thought I was on the wrong one. Authorizing the city manager to apply for a national recreation and Authorizing the City Manager to apply for a National Recreation and Parks Association Grant. This is requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Burksstresser?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize the city to accept funds if we are awarded through the NRPA, or National Park Recreation and Parks Association, Show Your Parks Some Love Campaign, which would support expanded recycling efforts throughout parks and park facilities throughout the city and during community events. It is a $10,000 grant that does not require any city match, so this will authorize us to apply for the grant, and hopefully we are, we will be a recipient of the funds. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to accept and expend a grant from Montgomery County Human Services Planning and Development Department to help support the Senior Services Transportation Program. The amount, estimated cost is $13,240. This is requested by the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department, and I do move for its approval.
Second.
Okay, let's see, Mr. Burksstresser?
Thank you, Your Honor. These funds that come from the Montgomery County Human Services levy, essentially what we heard about earlier tonight, this would help to fund the white transportation minivans that you might see around town that are transporting seniors from the Lathrum Center, or it's funded through the Lathrum Center, but they're running around seniors to the various appointments, grocery, other shopping things around the city. We used to receive money through a federal grant that was administered through Montgomery County, however, that money is no longer available, and the funds have then therefore been rolled into this Montgomery County Human Services program. We were notified that we received funding from this grant program in the amount of $13,240. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any comments?
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution one-one-two-three-two-dash-two-five regarding repairs to the drainage trench around the Zero Depth Pool at the Adventure Reef Water Park. The revised estimated cost is $77,430. The amount budgeted is zero, and this is requested by the Public Service Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson?
Sure, thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Burksstresser?
The drainage trench in the water park around the Zero Depth Pool has numerous, this is at the water park, the rec center, has numerous leaks in the structure of the trench. We've had chlorinated water leaking from the pool into the ground. So we've had a CIP project this year to repair that. However, during construction, a portion of the existing concrete structure that supports the drainage trench was found to be deteriorated, and we need to do some additional work. The additional concrete work to build up the structure that supports the trench is approximately $35,800, which would bring the project total to $77,430. We do need council action on this tonight, because the total cost exceeds 25% above what was previously authorized by council. However, we are not requesting additional funds at this time, just the authorization to do the extra work. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to contract with Atherton Plumbing for replacement of portions of existing gas piping at Rosewood Art Center. Estimated cost, $37,293, and is requested by the Public Service Department. I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm gonna handle, have Mr. Burksstresser handle this one as well.
Thank you. So at the Rosewood Art Center, we still have some original gas lines that are in the ceiling and just below the roof that service our, or serve our new HVAC rooftop units. The lines are undersized, and again, original to the building. Therefore, we would like to upsize them to improve capacity and maintain proper heating prior to the upcoming winter season. We did see quotes for this. The Atherton Plumbing was the lowest at the amount of $37,329. We are funding this project through underspending on other 2025 facility capital improvement projects, and not requesting additional funds for this project. Just authorization to complete the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing completion of Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, Project MOT SR eight-thirty-five dash two-point-five-seven PID one-one-six-nine-two-two within the City of Kettering, and authorizing the City Manager to enter into one or more related contracts with ODOT. This is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Burksstresser?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
Just a guess.
Yeah. The title of the resolution is "ODOT Speak" for a bridge replacement project that will happen in, basically in 2027. Because State Route eight-thirty-five, which is also Research Boulevard, is in the City of Kettering, ODOT requires us to authorize the construction of the project within our jurisdiction. So essentially, that's what this resolution does tonight. Again, this project's scheduled to bid in late 2026, construction in 2027. However, I will mention that we do have a, we have a 2026 capital improvement project that will construct a shared-use path up to, just short of where the new bridge will be, or the replacement bridge will be. So for a short time, we'll have a path nowhere, and then, once the bridge, the new bridge is built in 2027, the spur connection off the Iron Horse Trail that goes up and down County Line Road, we'll have a spur over to the Sixth River Development and Research Park. So it's kind of a two-step project, but by the end of 2027, it will make sense as to why we had a path nowhere for a while here next year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have one last resolution this evening. To make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Kettering, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2025. It's the amount of $37,000. It's requested by the Finance Department, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. Earlier this evening, you authorized us to accept two different grants. We now, through this legislation, need to make the supplemental appropriations to allow us to expend those funds. The first was $21,000 for the OVI Task Force Grant that I outlined, and the second is $16,000 for the 2025 Livable and Age-Friendly Communities Grant. And be glad to answer any questions regarding the supplemental appropriation.
Any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay, we have no ordinances in first reading this evening. This is a slip. Do we have any certifications or petitions?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. We'll then turn to the Manager's Report for the community update. Mr. Grayson?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Unless you want Mr. Burksstresser to read?
No. All things facilities and constructions, for sure. Your Honor, members of council, there is a lot happening in Kettering during the fall. We always want to highlight the blood pressure clinic dates that we have, because having a healthy community is important to us. And you can see the October, November, and December dates that have been scheduled for blood pressure clinics at the Dayton Metro Library, Kettering Moran Branch on Far Hills. We encourage people who attend who may feel like they need their blood pressure taken. Medicare open enrollment is nearing, and it runs through October fifteenth through December seventh. Residents can schedule individual appointments by calling Senior Services Coordinator Natalie Storms at the number on the screen. This is a wonderful service that we offer where Natalie can assist you in this very important enrollment in Medicare. Always popular during the fall, the leaf pickup process is beginning Monday, October twentieth. It begins in District One, which is the very northeast quadrant of our community. I always want to highlight that residents should rake leaves only to the curb. Please no sticks, grass, or saw. The machines don't really like that stuff. Do not bag it. Additional leaves and sticks are accepted at the Yard Debris Center on Woodman Drive, and if you have any questions, please feel free to call our leaf hotline at the number on the screen. I think Ms. Owens, Chairman of the, well, actually, she didn't do Make a Difference Day. You guys talked about that earlier than her presentation, but Saturday, October twenty-fifth is Make a Difference Day, nine AM to noon. I think it was highlighted earlier this evening, but four great and different opportunities to contribute. A rain garden, removing invasive plants, Holiday Arts and Craft for seniors and veterans, a community blood drive. There is something that, for everyone, to have an opportunity to make a difference in Kettering, we encourage people to participate. Additionally, on October twenty-fifth, we are having our Drug Takeback, DEA Drug Takeback Day, ten AM to two PM at the Kettering Police Department. Please get rid of unwanted medications in your home by participating in that. If you don't go to those two things on October twenty-fifth, at eleven AM, you can take your pet to Wagaween, and that is at the Kettering Recreation Complex. It's a free event, and there will be opportunities for you and your pet to enjoy Halloween activities, photo booth, pet costume, walk-in wag course. We're thankful for our sponsors, Pet Suites in Houndstown, and our partners in this, Sixa and the Humane Society. Wagaween at eleven AM. Another free community event, and we really encourage families and citizens to enjoy, come and enjoy this, is a free movie night at Fraser Pavilion, a fun night under the stars. It's our first movie night with Disney's Halloween Town. It's a TV-rated G, TVG movie. It's free and open to the public. There will be food and concession opportunities. Gates open at five-thirty. The movie starts at six-forty-five. And I know Councilmember Sullivan will be there to check out the news screen. Yeah, I'm sorry, the date is also the twenty-fifth, so there is a lot happening in Kettering on the twenty-fifth. What is not happening on twenty-fifth, and is always happening on Friday, October thirty-first, is trick-or-treat, six to eight PM. I think the note I want to have with this is, there are a lot of pedestrians, many of them young, during trick-or-treat. Please drive safely. If you own a home built before 1978, and you are qualifying low-to-moderate income resident, your home may have lead in it because of its age, and we have a program that you may be eligible for that would help remediate that lead, making your home more healthy. If you think you may qualify based on the standards on the screen, please, we encourage you to contact our staff. We would be glad to help you. Your Honor, that's all I have, and nothing else to report about what we're doing on October twenty-fifth, which seems to be...
Or any other?
Everything.
Can I make a comment?
You sure may.
Y'all laughed at the name Wagaween, but I'm telling you, that is one of the cutest events the entire year in Kettering. It is so much fun. These dogs are in the coolest costumes, they run around, they get treats. It's amazing. You shouldn't laugh at it.
Would you enjoy it with or without a dog?
Yes, you can come without a dog, but I always bring in one of mine, the well-behaved one. Don't bring animal.
I won't bring mine in. Okay, great. All right, at this time, if anyone would like to come speak before City Council, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. I thought I could get through that. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before City Council this evening? I see we have one person at least, two people? Okay, three? Okay, we'll take you in that order, four? Okay?
Constance Myers, eight-zero-nine Rock Hill Avenue. I simply have a question regarding the resolution regarding the chickens. It was affirmed, I understand that. Now, I assume that he also has a right to appeal to Montgomery County? If he does, or if he does not, regardless, can you tell me, or do you know, what the time period would be that he has to remove those from his property?
I'll refer that question, Mr. Hamler.
The time for appeal is thirty days, and that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, so he can appeal up to thirty days? And then after that time period, then I assume then zoning and planning would take over, and if he does not appeal? And enforce the zoning? Or am I wrong?
Okay, we are in a, this is an issue that's under current judicial review, so we really cannot comment on that, but I think, I think you're on the right path.
Yeah, I know I'm on the right path then. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Emily Manrique, and I live at two-nine-two-one Black Hawk Road. And I would like to start by saying thank you to all of you for the service that you give to our city, and for your hard work and dedication. Last month, two people, including a child, were hit while crossing the street in front of Fairmont High School. And just this morning, yes, today, a young boy was hit while crossing the road in front of Kettering Middle School. Many students riding buses saw this incident take place. That boy was hit in the same place where my daughter was almost hit by a car twice last school year. On February twentieth, she came home shaken after nearly being hit by a truck while crossing Glengarry and Powhatan on her way home from school. It happened, again, just two months after that, with that car being driven by the art teacher. I am not alone in my fears about the safety in general for walkers, but also specifically for KMS students and at that specific intersection. I have heard many others who worry just as I do. Some even citing that they have also seen children almost hit. I've shared my concerns about student safety at Kettering Middle School several times, and I also contacted my City Council representative, but I have yet to see any changes. It's time for Kettering to take real action, citywide action, to make walking to and from school safe for every child. The intersection at Glengarry Drive and Powhatan Place in particular needs serious attention. Today's accident was not the first time that this has happened at that location. Every time I think about my daughter and her classmates crossing that intersection, I'm reminded of Erica Baker, and the tragedy that began at that same place. Tonight, I'm pleading with all of you. Please make the safety of our children a top priority. Let's take meaningful steps to protect them, so that no other family has to experience heartache or fear for their children. Thank you.
Thank you. May I just ask you something?
Yes.
Do you have a specific recommendation from what you've observed?
Yes, so it is a two-way stop. So if you are coming from the, from Powhatan or the parking lot there by KMS, you have a stop sign, but those driving on Glengarry do not have a stop sign. So my suggestion would be, it either be a four-way stop, or what I think would be best is to have an actual traffic light there. I know that during school hours, it's a very busy area, and during non-school hours, it's not, so I don't know if... So I don't know if that's something where it could be like a flashing red for the rest of the time and a light during the busy hours. But it is, because it is a two-way stop, there are people who feel the need to rush through and children just are not seen. I myself have witnessed a number of children almost be hit. So I would drive my daughter to school in the morning, and then she would walk home in the afternoon. And so as I was driving her in the morning, I myself witnessed that multiple times. And it just always scared me, and I just kept saying, someone's going to be hit, someone's going to be hit. I called the middle school, and I have emailed multiple times. I just haven't seen any change. And so I think this is the level at which it can be fixed.
Do you by any chance know the condition the child was hit today?
From what I understand, of course, you know, Facebook News.
I'm trying to stop rumors, so.
So he, it sounds like he was able to get up. He, there was a presence of ambulance and did need, I think, some type of medical attention.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing this to us. Chief, did you want to say anything at this point?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We are obviously aware of the incidents that occurred, both at the high school and the middle school, and it's certainly a very big concern of ours and a high priority of ours. So we'll certainly be working with the schools and talking to the engineer department to see what measures we can take to try to keep the kids safe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, we have lady here. Is she up there? Okay. Let's see. It looks we have one coming from each end. Yeah, I was gonna say, I think lady in the way.
My name's Ashlyn Witt. I live at 1349 Melrose Avenue. I'm also here about our student safety. I have three children. Two of them are walkers to Southdale Elementary. This is not just a Fairmont or a KMS problem. This is all of our school's problem. My kids have to cross Dorothy every morning, and they have an adult crossing guard who has had to put her body between cars and my children before to make sure that they are safe, and that is not okay. The solution is not longer car lines. My kids love walking to school. It gives them a sense of pride. But I should not have to worry that they are not going to make it to school, that they are not going to make it home. There are very easy solutions to this. Ten minutes spent on the Internet is going to show you that there are very simple and easy things to make a crossingway more pedestrian-friendly. Things like daylighting, bright paint that shows where you can and cannot put a car and where a person goes, bump outs to make the crosswalk a shorter distance for a pedestrian to go, raised crosswalks, something like that. We've worked great over at KMS where it's on a slow street and the car has to go up and over. You're getting kids taller and you're making cars slow down. The point is to make cars slow down to a pedestrian rate, not make people speed up to a car rate. And even tomorrow, we can't implement those things overnight, having a police officer in all of our school zones, letting people in the city know that it is unacceptable to speed through a school zone. It is unacceptable to be driving your car while looking at your cellphone anywhere, but especially when our children are involved. Our community is built on the back of our schools, and our kids, every single one of them deserves an education. And if they can't get to school because they're getting hit by cars, heck, I am a Fairmont graduate. This happened when I was in school too. I remember that happening. I talked to friends that I have that work in Centerville, who have worked there for decades, and they have never had a student get hit. Oakwood doesn't even have buses. They have a very high percentage of students who walk to school, and they have had one incident ever. And it is ridiculous. This seems to be a Kettering problem. Multiple students in the first nine weeks of school is unacceptable. This is not a problem to talk about or to think on. This is a problem to solve now because we have kids who are getting hurt. And it's going to stop being, we had a kid who was able to get up and get into the ambulance, and we've got a kid who's not making it to school anymore. We already heard that having a healthy community is important to us, and that means protecting our most vulnerable children who are just trying to go to school. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are serious issues that I can discuss with the city council, there is a we can't solve tonight, we can't solve the talk, but probably talk will be needed. So, thank you. Helps turn on the volume. So I really, really appreciate you bringing this forward. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, was there someone else who wanted, right there?
Hi, my name's Carol Galloway. I live at 2505 Acorn Drive here in Kettering. I'm the administrator for All Things Kettering, and we like to run our own little surveys on there of what, we have about 3,400 members in Kettering that they want to, you know, and their thoughts and comments. And some of the things, we recently ran a survey because of all of the apartment communities that are being built in Kettering. And 79% of the people that answered the survey were opposed to any more apartments in Kettering. We would rather see other developments besides apartments, and I get that that's probably a big moneymaker, but we don't feel that's the most important thing. That was one thing that I wanted to say. The other thing is, a lot of the people have said that, and I'm glad to hear that you're tightening your rules on landscaping, yardkeeping, because we're seeing, I grew up here, went to Fairmont East, you know, in in Riffle, Rolling Fields. So I'm extremely familiar with the entire area. Houses are being allowed to run down in Kettering. That's a big concern that a lot of us, especially older that have lived here and seen. Houses are being allowed to run down in Kettering. Yards look terrible. I have called my cell phone a neighbor for two years. They still have trash piled up at the side of their house. They have an unlicensed vehicle. Their backyard looks like a jungle. I mean, we're seeing this in lots of places. Drive down Acorn Drive. Driveways are crumbling apart. You need to have that in your rules. Drive down a lot of the streets in Kettering. And I think we need to make it a priority. We can dress up the rest of Kettering. We can fix the shopping center at Woodman and Dorothy Lane, fix some of the other shopping areas, but we cannot, it won't do us any good if all of our houses are rundown. And some of them are rental houses, and landlords need to be held accountable to make sure that their tenants are keeping the places up. But that was another big concern. That's two of the concerns we wanted to share with you. We are not interested in any more apartments being built in Kettering, and we are not pleased with the way property maintenance has been kept after. I know people, I know neighbors and other friends, I know quite a few people in Kettering from growing up here that have made complaints in all different areas of Kettering, and it feels like they're not being acted on. So we just wanted to make you aware of those situations and, you know, some of our little surveys that we've done and conversations that we've had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, I really appreciate people coming forward to speak on issues that are important to them. I wish we'd see more of it. It's great to have a lot of people here in the hearing tonight. We meet every other Tuesday at 7:30, and we invite you to come forward. And I can tell you, complaints from that podium very often end up in changes in the way things happen in the community.
I would like to run a survey, and I may do it, I don't know if the mother left, that they're concerned about their children. I want to find out how many other parents have seen and heard things, so I may run that on All Things Kettering too.
Okay.
So, but yeah.
I'd be interested in seeing the results of that.
When you grow up in a community, you want to leave it when it's my time to leave here. I want to make sure that it's great for my children and grandchildren, like it was when I grew up.
Right, okay. Appreciate it. Okay, now it's your turn to hear from council members? We got, we got some more?
Hello, my name's Tom Roberts. I live at 2909 Cunningham Lane. I got a question for you guys. Now, this is on a house on Cunningham Lane, 2901 Cunningham Lane. The owner is Jeff Phillips, and he has not had trash picked up as long as I've lived there when we bought the house, nine years. He goes around at night and uses other people's trash cans when they're asleep. I've called him twice. And now people are letting him use their trash cans, which I got photos on my phone, they're filling them up and taking them back to their house, have it picked up. And Rumpkey's, and Rumpkey's getting tired of it because they're getting complaints about it. And I've talked to the city and never got no answers. And he's got three junk vehicles, supposedly been gone last month, like Kettering, that are still there, but just don't get no answers. That's my problem.
Okay. May I suggest that you, after the meeting, leave your information with City Manager's office, and he can follow up the appropriate person.
I've talked to, ma'am, I've talked to you over the phone about it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I don't recall the conversation, but if you say you did, you did.
That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Todd Combs, 817 Kenosha Road. Thank you for your decision earlier today. But I'm actually here for a different reason.
One second, let's see if we can get a little quieter.
I'm glad he's still here.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
I happen to live one street behind Stroup Road off of Ackerman. And at our traffic light, we have a sign that says, "No Turn on Red." And they turn right down Ack, or turn right down Kenosha, and these cars are going super fast. We've got children crossing the street to get to the sidewalk across the street that have been nearly hit numerous times. I've called Mary, the police chief secretary, back when I, when she worked there, I don't know if she still works there, and made the same complaint. Coming home from work one time when I worked night shift, they went through my driveway because I was backing into my driveway too slow for them. I was wondering if we can get a stop sign at Mary Carr and Kenosha versus a yield sign. Maybe that would slow down the raceway that Kenosha has become to, if that's something we can do. Versus a yield sign, put a stop sign there. If we're supposed to be making a difference, I think this would be a great difference for our children crossing the street. That's all I have.
Make sure you leave your name and number.
It's already down there.
Where's the "No Turn on Red"?
Stroup and Ackerman. The kids are going to walk into school to Oakview across the street, and it's getting to be really bad where you got people parking on both sides of the street there. I think it's 50 feet from the stop sign. They're still, they're blocking everything, even the fire hydrants to pick their kids up versus going through the proper way of doing it. But thank you.
Can I just ask you a question out of curiosity? I've been on the air for almost four years. We've never before, in these four years, had a string of people coming before us like you have tonight. What caused you to come tonight?
Come back?
Yeah, I mean, what, yeah, I mean, I'm just interested, are things suddenly getting worse or?
Well, I was already here for the hearing decision, but I work, I have to take off work to be here at this time. I work up to 70 hours a week. I'm a truck driver. So we first met when I was volunteering as a senior vice commander at the VFW on Third Street. I have a lot of passion for a lot of things. But yeah, this city is my home. I moved back here, and I was volunteer firefighter, and I really wish you guys would get it back. We got captains making 100 and some thousand off overtime. You know, the volunteers, I think my best year in the four years I was a volunteer, I made $45, $6,500. And that's a good tax savings for us as a Kettering resident. I mean, granted, I know the full timers need Level Two and paramedics, but the city provided me to go to Sinclair back in '96. EMT and everything was provided. But yeah, that was really good for us back then, and--
Don't, don't mistake me. You're more than welcome here. I'm glad to have you here. I'm just kind of intrigued by, I might say, loved having people come. We might have this place full every week from now on, so.
I mean, you might start seeing more of me.
They're not going to be very happy with me.
No, probably not.
So, thank you. Is there anybody else?
I'm Ralph Haynes. I live at 2949 East Cunningham Lane. I guess you all have seen me here before, several times. And I know there's some of this issue about what the gentleman here just got up and addressed about it, the mess at that house at 2901 Cunningham. His brother lives beside of it also. This gentleman here lives on the opposite side of the house. I've been, I've been in their driveways and yards and the stents from this house. I'd hate to have tried to have a barbecue. You couldn't eat it in front of that lot. He's got vehicles sitting there, not just cars, he's got gigantic trucks with license plates dated 1999. They're rusted down. This is the awfulst mess I've ever seen in that neighborhood. The whole neighborhood has been destroyed with one person, and he laughs at you. He laughs at you people, tells everybody, "They're afraid of me over there. They're not going to bother me." Just like the gentleman here was talking about a new ordinance on the grass cutting. I would love for you to come up to my house there on the corner and let me show you one that you, all you see, now you stand in the street and you can see the roof of his house. The grass, the weeds, things, and he has a sign posted in his front yard, and it looks like a legitimate sign that says, "Wildlife Habitat." This is his front yard, and this is what we look at every day up there. But it's something, something has to be stepped up before we get these ordinances to follow. They're there. What do we have to do to enforce them? We can come here, and we can complain, and complain, and complain. I know, I know the issue that we're dealing with over here, it's in civil court. We can't discuss a lot about it, and I know that. But something has to be, somebody has to step up to this guy and get something done. He's going to wind up getting physically hurt by somebody over there because they're getting fed, and I'd hate to see that happen, but it can happen to him. But whatever you guys can do, please step it up and see what we can get done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we will now go to council reports. Who wants to start?
I'm up. It's so great having so many people here tonight because I wanted to report that tomorrow there's a community forum event. So if you haven't got your fill of getting out at community meetings, it'll be at Van Buren Middle School. And so it's going to be a conversation about the future of the facilities for the schools, which is different than the city of Kettering. I'm talking about Kettering. I'm talking about Kettering City Schools now. So they are in the early stages of talking about what we will be doing with our buildings moving into the future, and so I would encourage everybody to show up, get informed, and also share your opinions on the matter. While the cities and the schools are separate, it's very much a city decision what ultimately happens with our schools, and I for one think it's important that we invest in our schools, but everybody should, I think, get involved and share their opinions on that. If you can't make it tomorrow night, I didn't say it's six, let's see, it's six to seven-thirty at Van Buren tomorrow night, and if you can't make it, you can go to ketteringschoolslevy.com to get a little bit more information on that. But that is it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
We're running a little late this evening, so I'll just make a quick comment. This past Saturday at the Kettering Business Park was our shred day. I attended for a little bit of time. I was amazed how many people were there. There were cars backed up on Wilmington Pike, ready to turn into the complex, and I was told they were lined up at eight o'clock in the morning for something that did not start till nine. So clearly, that's an event and a service that the city provides that the citizens are absolutely making use of. So well done by the city staff who organized that.
So because we are running long, I will cut out about half the things I was going to say, but we have some current KLA students here with us today, Jane Nesbit, Megan Moon, and Matt Madges. I did tell them all that they need to stand up and speak, but you're lucky we're going long, so we'll let you out of it tonight. So thank you guys for being here. I want to thank pretty much all of the city staff for being at our first KLA meeting of the year at Government Day, especially Matt Greason, Steve Bergstrasser, and Don Kirshner, who spent tons of time with us, and I'm not leaving the rest of you out, I'm so glad you all were there, thank you very much. And I'll cut out most of this, but I do want to say for Make a Difference Day, if you don't do anything else, go to the blood drive. Donate blood if you are able. It is one of the greatest gifts that you can give, it is so meaningful, and it is so important to do. I cannot go because I'm donating on the sixteenth, I'm donating this week, so I won't be eligible, but make sure to go to the blood drive if you do nothing else. It's easy and they give you cookies, that's all.
Top that.
Yeah, impossible. Tomorrow concludes the 2025 Hispanic Heritage Month. The Board of Community Relations has been busy over the last two months encouraging students to participate in a project around that. We're meeting this week to pick winners and excited to share those results on council in a couple of weeks. Speaking of BCR, that is the hardest working committee in town, and they're responsible for all the work that went into recognizing the dozen or so folks that were recognized as a good neighbor, and those stories were the range. It's, it's things from where a tree come down in a storm and blocked a street, a whole group of neighbors took apart the tree and moved it, and the homeowner came home and never knew that the tree was in the front yard because it had been done before he, he come home. There's stories of just checking on neighbors, caring for neighbors, and we should all just be encouraged on the number of nominations that come in that we can recognize those folks tonight because neighborhoods really are what makes Kettering a pretty special place. So BCR, Gwen Owens and Angela Rama from staff just did a great job leading that program. It's just really fun to be the rep from council to BCR. It's just really a great group of people. Also, last week I was able to attend the Ohio Municipal League Annual Meeting in Columbus for a few days, representing the city, and I was encouraged by a few things. One, we're not the only city facing issues like property maintenance and the hassle it takes to take care of these problems. And I'm talking to the guys right there from Cunningham. We're not alone in that, and there are folks that are finding creative ways to speed the process, and I look forward to sharing my notes with staff and when I spend time with folks from all over the state that are, have the same issue. It's not unique to us, but people are tackling it, and I was encouraged by that. Also spent time with state representatives from around the state talking about the minuscule increase to local government fund that they, they're going to share the cities, which is so small, it's barely noticeable, but having big conversations with the folks who make decisions that affect our city. So it was a real honor to be there for those three days last week and to just learn more about what it takes to make our city run more effectively. So more on that with staff, and Matt and I got to talk about a little bit earlier this evening. So to recap, great work to Board of Community Relations and everything they're doing. And it was just great to see the neighbors here tonight, and yeah, that's, that's it. We meet again next week. There's cupcakes downstairs. I know. If there's any left at this hour.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm not going to make you all listen to my croaky voice any longer, and I'm sure my colleagues here have said she's said enough as it is tonight. So with that, our next regularly scheduled meeting is scheduled for October twenty-eighth, two weeks from now, and this meeting is adjourned.